All right. All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the chamber or council chambers and is open for public attendance and participation. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Silman.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Brookman. Commissioner Noor.
Here.
Commissioners Sandu.
Here.
Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Dale.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Late but here, thank you.
And I do think that just Commissioner Gill had an excuse. She had told us that she was going to be out of the country, correct? Just for the record.
That is correct, and as well as the Vice Chair also gave us advance notice.
Perfect, okay, thank you. So we're going to go with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, so you are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited to large groups and are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. And I don't see anything. Written requests, members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be normally allowed by minutes to speak. And do we have any comments from the public?
There are no written requests.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdictions. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. So we all go into agenda modifications. Planning Commissioners, do you have any interest in modifying the agenda? Okay, can we conduct a vote? To approve the minutes?
Yeah, I motioned to.
Or modifications. You don't have any modifications? Do we need to have that approved? Okay, well, my note says, "conduct a vote to approve." Okay, moving on. Approval of minutes. Commissioners, do you have any interest in modifying the minutes? Nope, all right.
I've motioned to approve the minutes from April 24th, 2024.
I will second.
All right, got it? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're going to go get on to the business items. Consideration of a used permit 24-02 Harder Marketplace Monument Sign at the corner of Harder Parkway and Calusa Highway. We have Associate Planner Jess Preet Carr will let it walk us through it.
All right, good evening, Planning Commissioners. Today, we have a used permit for the Harder Marketplace Monument Sign. So tonight, the used permit for consideration is for a new 26-foot monument sign that currently exceeds the allowable height and square footage allowed by our current code. As shown on the screen, so our current code for a C3 with five or more businesses, the height requirement is under 20 feet is permitted, and the size is 128 square feet. And what the applicant has proposed is a 26-foot sign and approximately 146 square feet of signage. So here we have the sign. As you can see, it is 26 feet, and we do have the night view available as well with inserts for other tenants to use it as well. So a little bit of, oh, we're going to talk about the project site. So again, this is in the new Harder Marketplace development on the corner of Calusa Highway and Harder Parkway. And then on the right side of the screen, it is the approximate sign location, so it'll just be right there at the corner. Background, so the Harder specific plan includes a mix of commercial and residential uses. In July of 2023, three used permits were approved. So we've got Raising Canes, Dutch Bros, and the Arco AMPM with the car wash. And the site's currently under construction as Phase One. So those three businesses are considered Phase One, and Phase Two construction will be occurring in the future. And as I stated earlier, the monument sign will be available for all tenants in the Harder Marketplace development. And here I've shown on the screen the overall site plan of what this is supposed to, or what it's going to look like in the future. Of course, Phase Two, there may be changes, and depending on the use, it may come back to Planning Commission for approval. But you can see Phase One, we've got Raising Canes, Arco, Dutch Bros, again, currently under construction, which is very exciting. And Phase Two, it's a mix of buildings, so commercial buildings and offices. And again, as I stated, so the current sign ordinance, the maximum height is 20 feet, and the sign area is 128 square feet. But with an approved used permit from the Planning Commission and having a finding that the sign is needed to advertise a business or businesses that have limited visibility from the adjacent public roadway, the additional height may be approved. And here, you can see the sign that is proposed going westbound. The sign is going to be a double-faced illuminated monument sign with anchor tenant space available. And the sign is very neutral in the design and color. So they did kind of replicate what's currently at the Yuba City Marketplace, so just the adjacent shopping center. And the sign does meet the overall design standards. Of course, it's just the height that we need the approval on tonight. And so the site is surrounded by other businesses, mainly retail. So if you've got Buffalo Wild Wings, Home Depot, Walmart, and then just to the south, you have our car dealership. And the sign is intended to attract more users to the shopping center. And so the justification, so Harder Marketplace, their current challenge is Phase One seems like you can definitely see it as you're driving down 20. However, when you take a look at Phase Two, it is kind of, it's blocked by landscaping, and it will be blocked by buildings. So just with this additional height, it does attract, you know, the driver or anyone to, you know, pay attention and make their way to there, as well as providing the visibility for businesses you can't see off of the road. So I just did a few Google screenshots. So as you can see, this is where it's going to be proposed as you're driving down. And, you know, as you look to the north, it's a little bit harder to see what businesses would be there. So here we are, we've got the landscaping, again, kind of blocks the buildings that will be there in the future. And for the used permit findings, so our code states that approval of a used permit shall only be granted when the following findings can be made. So they're shown on the screen, one through seven. And again, with this used permit, number seven is the additional one that is required, and the findings were provided in the resolution that was attached to the staff report. The environmental assessment, so staff looked at the project and determined that it does, it is categorically exempt per Section 15311, so accessory structures. And this Class 11 exemption includes construction of on-premise signs, and as well as none of the exemptions in CEQA Guideline Section 15300.2 apply to this project. So tonight, we have the recommendation on the screen, shown as A and B, and we do also have the applicant and the owner here, if you guys have any questions. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions? Or comments? Yeah?
I have a question. Jess Preet, it doesn't look like we have a rendering of what the sign would look like, or the monument, if it followed existing guidelines?
So we don't, but if you look at the plans, essentially, let's see if I can get this to work. It seems like really the additional height is this right here. So kind of like more of that architectural element is what it kind, is what's exceeding the 20-foot height requirement. So the top portion of this is about like five, five feet right here, but all of the remaining part of it is, does meet the standards at 20 feet.
Okay, do we know how high the Walmart monument is that you showed a picture of?
I believe it's 20 feet.
Okay. I just have a slight concern because we had something come up last meeting about a flagpole in height. And it seems like if we allow this, which I don't have a problem with allowing this, but it kind of opens up the door, it becomes subjective. What if the next one's 32 feet? And then at what point do you get this, you know, undulation of structures in Yuba City that has no continuity? So I don't know. Doug, can you speak to that? Is it, is it something that the city will change? Because it seems like we need to just greenlight any request for elevation on a sign? Because saying no to someone doesn't seem fair.
So thanks for the question. I don't think, I can't remember if anyone on the Planning Commission today was on the Planning Commission in 2019, at which time the Commission approved used permit 2004, which actually was the sign request over by the Yuba Sutter Mall. And you see their sign there. That sign actually is 60 feet tall, so quite substantial, was approved by the, was approved. So this is significantly lower than that, due to the fact that the Phase Two of Harder Marketplace, as Jess Preet noted, is setback. If they're going to be successful in seeing that site build out, they need to have visibility. And so for that reason, we thought that the height request was reasonable, and design overall matched that of the neighboring sign across the street.
I guess the next, the follow-up question would be, since I've only been on this for like a year and a half, looking backward, have we said no to an applicant that wanted, you know, an increase in elevation for their monument or their sign?
We've only had, I would say, the, in recent years, the sign proposed at the mall, and then this one. It is something that's unusual. We do try to frankly beat up the applicants a little bit to make sure that they're going to justify the need for it, and at this case, we felt that the request was justified.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, just from a practical standpoint, is there any proposal for another sign at the other end of Harder Parkway on? Thank you, I wanted to say Bogan, and it wasn't Bogan, CRS, I'm getting old, Jackie.
So up on Butte House?
Yeah, yeah, up by CRS.
So the north end of the Harder specific plan is residential.
Okay.
In nature, and so we've got the Harder North subdivision, which occupies a portion of that, and then there's a probably about seven, eight acres of actually land-zoned R3.
Okay.
For apartments. So, so no, there would not be a sign.
And, and I apologize, Doug, but the commercial and office-based portion of this ends at, does it end at the light?
It does extend. It does extend.
And then go back.
One tier of parcels, I think, north of the light that goes into Harder Marketplace.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, I had some questions too, and I actually found the city of Reno, just what you had said about the way it sets back. So there is, you know, there is codes that say if you are setback, you know, and that's a reason, and so thank you for putting that line there, because that's what I read in Reno, so that's good, although we're not Reno. Okay, so I'm going to open it up for you. You good, everybody? Public hearing? Anybody want to speak? Go ahead. Would you go back to the back and just state your name and address? Hi. Oh, sorry.
The first house on the Furnace Road, closest to the monumental sign. And my only concern is, you know, the lights from the dealership over there have lit up our place tremendously, and I wouldn't, I would, I would like to hope that, you know, it wouldn't get any worse, but it probably is, but I'm, you know, to approve six more feet and not say my concern about it, you know? I just wanted to mention that. It's probably going to light it up even more. So that's all I have to say. I know I probably don't have much sway in here, but I'm probably the one that's most affected by it.
Okay, perfect. No, thank you for coming in. Can I ask a question? So could you talk about the lighting for, you know, what you see? I don't know, I don't live over there, but that is a concern.
Definitely, thank you for your comment. So we do have, the lighting is illuminated, and it seems like it's going to be where the actual business names are. And then Mr. Tucker, maybe if you have a little bit more information on exactly how it will be like? There are other options with the signage, where we've seen backlit lighting, so you have the actual like letters, and it's more like a halo effect. But the concern with that is, it's not very visible through when you're driving down the road. We previously, last year, someone did come in for the monument sign where the Jim Boys is, and it was requested to have the halo backlit lighting, and they actually came back to us and said, hey, it's impossible to read our sign because it's not well-lit. But we are happy to, if, you know, there's anything that we can do to help with the lighting, you know, happy to address that as well. Mr. Tucker, do you have anything to say with the sign?
That would, that'd be great. Why don't you go back to the mic, please? Thanks.
Can we get you to, thank you, sir.
There we go. My name is David Ford, I'm representing Yescow Signs as the contractor. So as Jess Preet mentioned, the, the main lighting on this is going to be the tenant signage. I believe the Harder Marketplace at the top will light up, but it'll just be the letters. It's internally illuminated, you know, we can't control the brightness. One of the things that's required by the state energy requirements is that it have a dimmer switch installed on it, so that is a possibility. But again, you know, the Dutch Bros sign, white background, that one's going to definitely be brighter, but like the Raising Canes, the Arco with the darker backgrounds, it's really the letters that are going to light up. So it's not going to be as bright as it looks on here, because there's obviously a lot of white panels. But it's designed this way because it is going to be more cost-effective for tenants to switch it out. When you talk about a halo-lit sign, some of the Dutch Bros letters, those are going to be pretty small, and if they're halo-lit, it's going to be very hard to read. It's also, you know, a lot more expensive when the tenants move in to make those changes than it is to, to use panels like this. I don't know how often they'll be changing, but it is, it is, you know, cost is definitely a consideration.
So thinking about a good neighbor, obviously, so maybe that is, you know, to be able to keep you in that link to, you know, I, we can't fix it for you, but maybe understanding what it looks like, maybe working together, maybe seeing a sign that, you know, if that would help you at all, because I understand what you're saying, the, the light in your backyard or your house, so just being a good neighbor, maybe that could be something to show his family, this is what it's going to look like, this is where we're at.
Sure.
To the top, on the top part, that's not going to be as bright as what they're saying is, right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah, that's, you know.
It's more illuminated.
As staff mentioned, it's the Harder Marketplace letter, so it's really those letters, it's a very thin stroke, so those are not going to be.
That's what I'm saying, I'd love for you to go see a sign that we're talking about.
And again, it is not designed to be like a beacon, it's not designed to be like Las Vegas Strip or something like that. It's really just designed so that when people are driving down the road, they can see the, you know, see the tenants that are there at night, and, you know, again, it's that, that's sort of the intent of it, it's not, it's not to, to be an eyesore, it's to, it's to basically just advertise the businesses that are in there.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think in terms of candle, candlelight power, there, this is nowhere near those area lighting on the car.
Back in the day, oh, yeah.
Correct, yeah, it's different, it's different.
Angels appear.
Correct, yeah.
Right, so I have a question for you, because you mentioned that there is a dimmer?
Yeah, it's, it's required as part of Title 24 Energy Requirements.
Can you put that on a timer?
Well, I don't know if the dimmer can be put on a timer, it might be able to. I know that, you know, the signs, I'm guessing, would be put on, I don't know what the hours of operation are.
I was just thinking, you know, if, after maybe 10 o'clock, it could dim a certain percentage, I mean, if there was an impact and we had that option, I don't know who would be open after 10 o'clock anyway over there, but at least it would, it would mitigate the impact on the neighbors, so maybe that's something we want to look at, if possible.
I just like the, you know, collaboration, and I appreciate that from you.
Thank you.
We can't dictate what you're going to do, but we definitely appreciate that, that part. Good neighbors, I love that.
Sure.
Did you want to, oh, thank you. Any questions for, okay? Anybody else want to speak to?
I have one quick, just real question to the sign.
Sorry.
So the pitched part, right? The triangular, the cap on it?
Yeah.
Do you know roughly how many feet elevation that part is? And then there's a rectangular part under it. It seems like the collective elevation of that would probably be six or so feet.
Yeah, there's some dimensions on there, I'm trying to.
I think that's what Jess Preet had said.
It was about five feet. It's, so the top, the little triangular part at the top is two feet, three inches. The Harder Marketplace is two feet, six inches, so that's about four foot nine, there's a little gap in between, so it's probably around five feet, and then you've got the spacing down below. And obviously, we wanted to keep that part of it at the top, it's a nice design element, we didn't want to just chop off the top of it, it'd look like a sign and identify the center. And then at the bottom, you know, the other spot is the bottom, you know, there's some spacing at the bottom, but again, with landscaping and things around that, you start putting tenants down there, it's not, you're really not going to see it. So, you know, if you were, if you were to reduce the height of this, you're really probably going to cut out those bottom four tenant spaces. And again, the idea is that a lot of these tenants that are setback need that advertising, so we're trying to fit as many as we can on the sign and still make the, you know, lettering big enough to be legible as people drive by.
Okay, I just asked for, on behalf of the neighbor, because if you, if you add that elevation, right, you're almost at five feet, so really, the sign is much more in line with our current regulation, and the darker part probably is minimal lighting. I'm just, just trying to kind of frame it.
Sure.
Yeah.
So thank you for knowing that.
Yeah, because he had just said the, the actual letters are very, and it's like when your car lights it, you know, yeah. Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
I have a question for staff, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Jess Preet, could you go back to the slide that shows the northbound view of the, the sign elevation? Nope, go, yep, you passed it, I think. Right there.
It's westbound.
Westbound?
That's south, is that, no, that's, westbound, right?
Westbound, yes.
Did I say northbound?
Yes.
Yeah, that really didn't exist, did it? You could have called.
That's why I can't click through, like I don't see it.
What I'm seeing on the other side of that sign is, and I, it's hard for me to delineate really where those trees and other landscaping is, but sir, how, how far away is your home from? Okay. Okay.
So in order for the gentleman to be recorded, we would need him to come back up to the microphone.
Thank you.
And I do just want to point out, again, this sign is going to be right here at this corner.
If you, if you put that up again, that'll.
Yeah. Right there.
You see that right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else would like to speak? All right, your turn, sir. Turn your little light, there you go.
Good evening, Commissioners, Tom Tucker, Harder Packing Company, 1321 Harder Parkway. I serve as the manager for Harder Packing Company. I agree with the gentleman that was opposing the sign, and as far as the lighting from the, the auto dealers across the street, it's extensive lighting. This is going to be miniscule compared to the lighting he's already getting. Also, it's approximately 300 feet from his house, and we're entitled to build buildings adjacent, if his westbound, or his eastbound boundary, there'll be future buildings in there. We're entitled to build buildings to 24-foot in height. I have worked with the residents in the past as far as increasing the wall height, including his property, to add additional foot height, so there'd be a little more screening. I have dealt with the gentleman, he's a caretaker for, oh, gosh, Norleen, Norleen.
It's Norleen.
Norleen.
Oh, yeah.
Help me out last name. Cross, yes. I have worked with them on this project. I have tried, I've, in the past, brought, bought them, gave them a check for extra landscaping to shield it off with shrubs or bushes. I'm willing to also help them screen their property off. I'll write them a $1,000 check tomorrow. And that buy a lot of landscaping, because future, you're going to have a building eventually that's going to be within probably tenant, or, well, there's buffers width, probably 15 feet from that eight-foot wall we built you. So, and that height could be 24 foot, so I'm willing to work with the neighbor, but we need, in order to be successful, realtors have come to me, because we're so far backset, have told me, in order to be successful, you have to have signage for the back property. Walmart has three 20-foot signs along their frontage. I'm asking for one sign, six foot, we'll try to make it as peaceable to the neighbors as we can.
That's all we can ask for, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's bring it back. First of all, I appreciate that, appreciate this good neighbor trying, we're trying. I do too, thank you. Hey, we made somebody happy today, you made me happy.
Is that recorded, actually?
All right. And that's what this is for, and thank you for coming. This, that really means a lot to us. All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, are you ready for a vote? Okay, who would like to make a motion?
Make the motion. I move that we adopt a resolution making the determination that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15311, accessory structures, and approve used permit 24-02, subject to the conditions of approval to allow the construction of a 26-foot monument sign on the corner of Harder Parkway and Calusa Highway.
Second to motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, there we go. And thank you again for coming, that really means a lot, and I thank you too for both of you. All right, we're going to move on to the next. Consideration of used permit 2306 to allow the use of three-story, 93-unit skilled nursing intermediate care facility in a CO district located on East Onstart Road. Again, Associate Planner Jess Preet, boy, they're keeping you busy.
I love it. Hello again, so this one's pretty exciting. So we have another used permit for consideration for a skilled nursing intermediate care facility in a CO district. So the proposal here is, as Chairwoman Silman just stated, for a new three-story, 93-unit facility. So there's going to be 27 memory care units and 66 assisted living, and the development is going to meet the standards of our municipal code. Additionally, the applicant is going to have to apply for a lotline adjustment to either adjust the parcel line or merge the two existing parcels, just due to where the layout of the building is, it's right on the property line. And the reason why we're here tonight is because the municipal code does require a used permit in a CO district for a skilled nursing or an intermediate care facility. So the project site, it's currently on an undeveloped parcel as owned Office &amp; Office Park. To the north, we have the Yuba Sutter Dialysis Center and American Red Cross, and to the south, we have single-family residential homes. On this site layout, so this is where the proposed facility is, there is currently, it's paid for parking, and then we have the vacant lot here, and where the proposed additional parking is going to be, same thing, it's a current vacant lot. And I believe the property line kind of just runs like this with American Red Cross, and then we do have the other parcel somewhere around here. So we've got the two that will either have to do the lotline adjustment or merge together. So the traffic, we did just a quick, you know, analysis of the site to see if, what the traffic would be like with a new senior living facility, and we believe. with a new senior living facility. And we believe, um, staff believes that, um, it'll actually be, uh, less than what's generated by a traditional office or office park use. Um, so the proposed project, um, it's not anticipated to really cause, um, any impacts to traffic that's currently there. With the parking, um, we do have, um, point six spaces required for senior living. We have 56 parking spaces, um, that are required. So there's 39 new spaces and there's currently 43 existing spaces. And there is also, um, a parking easement on the site. So there's an easement, an existing easement for underground utilities, joint vehicle vehicular parking and cross access and storm drainage to be reserved. So essentially, um, they are able to park if needed, um, throughout the site, throughout the existing site. The site and building design. Um, so there are a few key design elements that we've worked with the applicant. So, um, you know, the recessed windows just to add depth, uh, exterior wall lighting to be decorative, stone veneer to be incorporated throughout the building. Uh, we are requesting, um, a decorative masonry wall and a coordinating color palette, um, just with the different colors that are being proposed. And there is a condition in there, um, so condition of approval number four will require a minimum of a six-foot decorative masonry wall constructed along the south and east property lines or as approved by the Development Services Director. Um, we have that caveat in there just in case, um, if the applicant would like to go higher, they do not have to come back to, um, Planning Commission for approval. Um, and in our code, it does state if there is, um, commercial, a, a commercial lot adjacent to residential, um, a six-foot masonry wall is required. So the site layout, as you can see here on this screen, um, so I really appreciated working with the applicants here because they, um, really took our comments into consideration and really revised the entire layout. So originally when this project came in, they had their building proposed, um, just along the east side here. And, um, after kind of doing some back and forth, we, um, they actually came back and proposed a driveway. So what's neat about this is the driveway now will allow for a greater buffer between the existing residence and the proposed three-story building. Um, so with that, you know, we have, um, instead of it kind of being, you know, the 15 foot setback required, there is a greater setback. And as well as they have, um, a courtyard. So again, it's on the backside of their building to again allow the privacy for the senior living, um, facility as well as for, uh, the existing residences. And here we do have, um, the new, um, driveway, um, for the new parking spots. So we've got our 26 proposed here. And then again, all of this will be available for the dialysis center as well as our, um, for the proposed facility as well as American Red Cross. The elevations, so as shown on the screen, we've got, um, the elevations, we've got stone, there's, um, different colors. There's awnings, um, and you know, just really a lot of effort has been put into this to make it a really nice looking building. And, um, one of the other requests that we did have was there is actually no balcony. So again, respecting the privacy of the existing homes there, there will be no, um, no balconies facing the residences. And landscaping, um, here we have their landscape plan. And as you can see, um, it is landscaped fairly well. Um, but staff has requested in the conditions to add a bit more screening, um, whether it's hedges or trees just along this side right here to allow again for more of the privacy, um, between the proposed use and the existing residences. And the use permit findings. Um, so again, we have the six that are, um, required. And all of these findings could be made as was shown in your staff report. And, um, for the environmental assessment, so, um, we determined that this project is categorically exempt from review under, uh, California Environmental Quality Act guideline, section 15332 infill development. And, um, staff determined that none of the exceptions to the categorical exceptions in section 15300.2 apply. Um, and here on the screen, um, I've listed out the guidelines for 15332 infill development. And this site does meet all of those. So it's consistent with the general plan designation. Um, it, it's not greater than five acres. Um, and you know, that there's no rare or threatened species. And, um, that there won't be any, um, results in significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality or water quality. And currently all city services will be available at this site. So the recommendation tonight is, um, to conduct a public hearing and, um, as shown on the screen for B, to adopt a resolution that is categorically exempt and to approve use permit 2306. Um, and then with that, I did print out a comment that we did receive. Um, I can read it into the record. Um, Chairwoman Silman, once you open it up for a public hearing. Um, and we do have, um, the applicants here as well. If you have any questions and staff is also available.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any questions of staff? I always look, sorry, I always just look at you for some reason. I'm going to go this way. Is there any questions from staff? Or not staff?
It's probably going to come up because of, is, is, can I mention the letter?
Yeah, she's going to read it into.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, I think after that I'll have a.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. Is that, okay. Well then let's open it up for a public comment. Is there anybody, anything online?
All right. So I, we did receive one public comment. Um, this is from Kimberly Kirby and she is with American Red Cross. Good afternoon, Jaspreet. Thank you for meeting with me this morning to discuss the project. This is an unofficial response to our concerns. The document that I picked up this morning has been sent to the National American Red Cross Real Estate Department for their official response to our concerns. We anticipate a response within the next few weeks. Our concerns are with parking overflow from the proposed assisted living facility and access to the south side of our warehouse. Use permit 2306, proposed assisted living facility, applicant owner, Etan Fraser Galloway Group. Reference parcel one in your presentation. Please refer to the map included in your presentation which identifies the American Red Cross as parcel one. This map clearly shows our building and the adjacent parking lot which we own and maintain. Concern, parcel one is owned by the American Red Cross and these parking spaces are not available to the proposed assisted living projects' day-to-day operations. We have limited parking available for our own operations. We require clarification on how the owners of the proposed assisted living facility will mitigate the potential parking issues. Our warehouse plays a critical role in our disaster response efforts throughout Northern California. We require clarification on how this project may impact our ability to access the south side of the warehouse. Thank you in advance for hearing our concerns. National American Red Cross will be responding to you soon to get a better understanding of the impact this project will have on our day-to-day operations of our facility located at 2125 East Onstott Road, Yuba City, California 95991. Kind regards, Kim Kirby.
Can you address any of these or would that be better to have her address what, or do you want to ask a question?
Well, it's just, it's a unique, like, property, right? It's shared space, but you see clear defined property lines. And so there's a property line. I'm assuming the warehouse is the one that's just to the east, right? It's got the red roof. Is that their warehouse?
Yes, that is correct. So they are referring to this one.
Yeah. So I, I guess my question, and they're not here to answer at Red Cross, is the, a property line is a property line. And so whatever the owner of that adjacent property does, as long as it's on their side of the property line, whatever access they have now, they're going to have to the property line. So it seems like kind of a moot point unless I'm missing something.
Um, no, that is correct. So what is currently being proposed, um, uh, we can, I'll try to outline it. So we're going to have a driveway that extends here. Um, and right now, um, and we do have the applicant. They can kind of state what's going to happen, but, um, there is parking here and then it goes out this way. So, um, from looking at the plans, it doesn't seem like it's actually going to be impacted because I'm assuming what American Red Cross is doing is they're probably accessing it again, maybe this way. Um, but there is nothing that should be blocking off their actual building. So they still have access to it. Um, the only new development that will be occurring is there's going to be a parking lot right there. And, you know, something, um, if they are interested is it can, they can kind of, um, you know, extend the driveway or the street. So there is access to it, but I can't, I mean, I don't want to speak on behalf of American Red Cross, but I don't know if they would want a driveway leading to the actual storage building. So as of right now, um, Mr. Norris, you stated it is, you know, we have the parking spots here, but it should not be impacted for them to get access to it.
Jaspreet, if, if, I could refer you back to the letter, I think, right, right at the very close of it. She said she was concerned about this development impacting access from the south side, which I would assume would be from that area right there. So it sounds to me like they're accessing it from this portion and going into the south side during emergency response times. If, did, did I hear that portion of the letter correctly?
Hmm, I don't think.
I believe that is what she said.
Did, did anybody else?
I think that's to get to the warehouse they're concerned.
Yeah.
But it's not.
That is the warehouse.
I know. So what they're, what I understand it's, you said there's, is there a driveway to the warehouse?
To the north.
To the north.
The north.
Yeah.
She's concerned about access in her letter from the south.
Yes, to access to the south side of the warehouse. So again, as I stated, um, it, it's just a parking lot. They are not proposing any sort of development to be occurring here. And this is how they would access their.
So is it going to be open or is it going to be curbed off? I don't really know that it matters. I'm just trying to address the concern of, and does it matter? Because then it, it makes it difficult without understanding what the need is to access that south side and what that looks like. Can they come up to the north, come down the sides and get in and go out?
That's what I was assuming maybe they were doing, but I'm more than happy to get with her, um, to figure out how are they actually, um, accessing this site, whether they drive up, you know, or is it really this right here? Um, but again, um, if it isn't on, if it's, they're staying on their side of the property. And, um, if you would like to mention, you know, if you are open to having it either open, so it's not curbed off, um, that can definitely be something that's determined at the building permit level.
I just wanted to, yeah, thank you.
Doug, you have some comments?
Uh, just wanted to clarify. So Jaspreet, for the subdivision for these lots, they have cross-access easements established, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So there's not a limitation of, of parking. So where, um, as was mentioned earlier tonight, you know, your parking may stop at the property line. Well, they have cross-access easements across both sides. And so there really isn't a limit. Red Cross could actually park on their property.
Okay.
You know, I was just going to say that. I have been to that property many times. And it seems to me that you do drive on the south and come around to the back to the warehouse. So I, I guess I wasn't seeing that that would be a complication at all.
Yeah, exactly. And I would say there's still plenty of opportunity for Red Cross and the applicant to get together. If they desire to have access from the south side of the warehouse, uh, they can coordinate that.
Something about a good neighbor. We got a theme going here, right? And I have a feeling you'll be a good neighbor. So. Oh, okay. Is there any other questions? All right. I'm going to close the public comment and bring it for a vote. Come on, I think.
Are we going to, do we get to, do we get to say anything before we vote?
Go ahead. Yeah, you could do anything you want.
You know, 20, 20, 22 years ago, when my daughter was 10 or 12, we were having a discussion about how old I was and, and what it was going to look like when I got old. And I said, you know, I just, I just want, you know, I'm expecting you to take good care of me. She says, oh daddy, don't you worry. I'm going to take the best care of you. And I'm like, oh, I just got all warm and fuzzy. She goes, I'm going to put you in the best home ever.
Well, there you go.
So here we are. So I'm just, I, I, I share that, which is kind of a, a, a lighthearted way of showing my appreciation for the project and what we're doing for seniors in the community. I think it's a huge need. I think this is a great project. I think it's brilliantly located. Uh, and so I'm anxious for a vote unless somebody else has anything they want to say.
I, I do. My mom is in a facility and I'm telling you, we need it, need it, need it. There is a waiting list for assistant living facilities. I mean, they need to be out of their houses, but they don't, they need their own little. That looks like a fine hotel to me. And I, I, I'm really excited about it as well. So, all right. Who's going to make a motion? I'm, I'm just opening it up. Are you ready?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to determine the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to guideline section 15332 infill development and approve use permit 23 dash 06, subject to the conditions of approval to allow the use of a skilled nursing intermediate care facility in a C dash O district on the vacant parcel located north of Northwoods Drive and east of East Onstott Road, APN 051-280-65.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay. I'm going to, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being a good neighbor. Alrighty. Can't wait to see it. I'll be at the ribbon cutting. Okay. Absolutely. Well, you've done that for many years anyway. So we know who you are. All right. So we're going to go ahead and consider the, and you, you don't have to go through all this, but consideration of Yuba City Capital Improvement Project Budget 24 through 29. Public Works, Kevin, there's somebody different at the mic. Hi, Kevin.
There you go.
There we go.
Good evening, uh, Planning Commissioners. I am indeed Kevin Bradford, um, with the Yuba City Public Works Department. Item seven before you tonight is a procedural item regarding the city's capital improvement project budget, CIP for short. Um, I believe many of you have participated in the approval of our previous CIP budget, if, if not all of you, last fiscal year or in previous years. Um, but just to recap, let's see. So per the California Government Code, the Planning Commission is required to review the city's CIP budget to determine whether or not it conforms with the general plan. Specifically, the Planning Commission reviews the following items for conformity. We've got the acquisition of land for public purch, purposes, uh, disposition of land, street vacation. So like if we're abandoning a road or something like that. And then authorization, uh, or construction of public buildings or structures. So if we're, we're building an addition at a fire station or something of that nature. Ultimately, the city council has the approval authority for the actual CIP budget and they're scheduled to do that next Tuesday night. So what is the, um, what is the CIP budget? It's a, a five-year work plan, basically, where, um, we try to determine how, um, the city needs to fund various, uh, improvements to, uh, maintenance or repair of existing facilities, considering the various revenue sources that we have coming in. And clearly we, our revenues do fall short of maintaining things the way we, we need to. The, the biggest obvious one is streets, right? That's the one most visible to people. But there's also our city facilities and underground utilities and such that are, are definitely in need of, um, repair. But the CIP, basically this budget prioritizes, um, the most urgent needs, considering the amount of money we actually do have coming in. So to help with your review of and consideration tonight, um, I'd like to just briefly highlight some of the items in the proposed CIP budget. And it's broken up into categories. Uh, we have these seven categories here. I won't read them all. Um, we do have, uh, different funding appropriations for this proposed budget. Uh, we have the general fund, which is, uh, basically typically your sales tax, um, and property tax. And then the Transportation Development Act, that's actually a quarter cent of the sales tax. And that has to go towards streets and roads. Um, the streets and roads is, are what you pay on, at the, as a gas tax when you fill up your, your vehicles at the gas pump. your vehicles at the gas pump. And then we've got the development impact fees that come in when people are pulling a building permit. And we have a few grants, like the federal grant, state revolving fund is a grant, community development block grant is another federal grant. We have water and wastewater, which is basically when you're paying your utility bills coming through. And then we have some other grant funding. So I, I don't know how much in the weeds you want to get on this. I, I've got a few projects in each category that I'd like to highlight for you. If you have any questions or whatever, stop me. If there's other projects that I've missed, feel free to ask about them. So 442 B Street Environmental Assessment, we were successful in getting a $2 million grant. This is at the southwest corner of Bee and Wilbur, so just east of the fountain. And this $2 million would go towards funding a, a study to basically develop a cleanup plan. There, the old Del Monte cannery was there, and there's other uses that have basically led to some contamination over the years. To be able to develop that property, we need to get it cleaned. This $2 million would basically develop a plan for how to do that. Then we would try to find some funding to actually do the cleanup. And then we would, there's a, actually a component for a lot of public outreach. And so ultimately, the public will have some input on what that site might look like in the future, but the current plan is maybe a mixed-use type of thing is, is what, is what we're looking for. The Fleet Master Plan, that's just a little seed money to start evaluating with the state requirements to switch over to electric vehicles. Try to come up with a plan for what that looks like for our fleet. And also, the existing bays at the Corporation Yard cannot accommodate some of our larger, like ladder trucks for the fire department and such. So come up with a plan for what that looks like as the city grows. And then the general plan, we had, we received $300,000 in a LEAP grant, which I believe is going towards zoning updates. And then we try to throw a little money each year to try to build up enough to actually do a, a formal general plan update. And then the Union Pacific Railroad property acquisition, that's just to continue the, the effort to work with Union Pacific to try to acquire the property at some point between Harder Parkway all the way down to Pluma Street for an eventual joint-use path. Obviously, there's some big construction obstacles with getting over Highway 20 and 99, but this is basically just to, to look at continuing the efforts and negotiations with Union Pacific for what that might look like. Let's see, so community services, this is basically our parks. So with Veterans Park, this one's a little fluid. We had a budget study session with council last Tuesday night, and what's going on at Veterans Park is there's been some vandalism down there that we want to address. But there's also been some consideration, we actually applied for a grant to actually move the park to the vacant properties on the north side of Bridge Street near Clark Avenue. And so we weren't successful in getting that grant, but there's some talk about maybe adjusting the scope of this project to use that to continue to apply for other grants where the park just gets moved instead of spending some money on vandalism repairs and then move the park anyway. Annual playground replacement, let's see, so with that one, what do I have here? Basically, every year, we try to throw some money at replacing playground equipment. And the next one is at Boge Park. So we have the 165,000 going towards that. And then the potential CDBG money is some improvements at Patriot Park over off of Queens. And then Pluma Street improvements, a little update on that one, that's, that's existing money, that project's under progress right now. The water tower's been completed. We're in the design phase for center street lighting, and then also an arch across Pluma Street down by Bridge Street, and then some improvements to the park underneath the water tower. So those are all moving forward, and we're trying to get those basically out to construction by the end of the year. Public safety, so this is our, our PD and fire. We have some money for roof and, roof and forcible entry props. So a little bit of money there out at the Fire Station 4 Training Grounds off of Ollyer. And then PD Evidence Storage Building, that project just got awarded recently. That's to put a new steel building at the police department so that they can store evidence appropriately. It needs to be in a climate-controlled environment, and that gives them more ability to, to maintain evidence the way they need to. And then with the Fire Station 2 remodel, that's the one off of, of Gray Avenue by April Lane School. And there's a dormitory expansion there where they're putting in three new dorm rooms and, and some new showers and communication facilities there. Streets and roads, this is a big one. Walton Avenue improvements, we're adding a little bit of money to this one. We, we, it's, it's a big project, $5.6 million total cost, and I think about 4.3 of that is a grant that we can't really tap into until 2026. So we're trying to limp along with maintenance on that. I know there's a lot of potholes in that, on that road, and it, you know, we're trying to get through next year, but we're adding a little bit of money into that, potentially for some right-of-way acquisition around Cherry to do some sidewalk improvements and such.
I was waiting for the segue. Thank you for just ending that off.
Thank you.
Yeah, this, this is a good project. It goes, it goes basically from Sam's Club all the way down to Hazel, which is south of Lincoln.
Love it.
It, it's a good one. Signal improvements, basically all new infrastructure and on the signals. Well, all the way from, you know, you have one of the Sam's Club, Bridge Street, Franklin, Comino de Flores, Lincoln. Boge Road improvements. So this one is actually two separate CIP projects. There's one to widen Boge Road from 99 to Railroad. And then there's also a separate one that is additional turning lanes on 99. So left turn lanes onto Boge, and I, I think it's a right turn onto, onto 99 from Boge. A very expensive project, and a lot of our, our resources are going there. Council recently entered into a development agreement, I believe, with Newcombe Ranch to where the city is the lead for this project, with the idea being that it would actually kickstart some residential and commercial development down there. And the goal is to have the sewer work awarded by the end of this calendar year. So 2025, you'll start seeing some, some big changes down on Boge Road between 99 and Railroad. The Caltrans portion of that is a longer project, and that's why we have two separate ones. Sutter Bike Path Gap Closure, that should be going to construction this summer. I highlight that one because it's, it's a nice project to extend the existing side of Sutter Bike Path from Hooper over to Harder Parkway, and then along the west side of Harder between 20 and Butehouse. A 10-foot-wide path that bikes and peds can both use. And then this other one is, is a recent one that's developed. This is a, the $50,000 is basically just to get some coordination with Caltrans started for potential safety improvements at Highway 20 and El Margarita. With the development that is proposed along El Margarita, south of the highway, and you got the school right, the high school right there, existing safety concerns, it, it's going to require a lot of coordination with Caltrans. We've got a big TBD there for the total cost, because if we go to a signal, you're, you're looking at a very expensive project, probably $4 million or somewhere in that ballpark. But this is just to get the process started, and it would be multi-year with dealing with Caltrans.
I don't think you can put a dollar on that one. I mean, the accidents that are already happening there, the tragedy we just had recently, and it's going to be a high school student, and then it's like, okay, you know, Caltrans, you have to do something at this point. So thank you for pushing along, trying.
Is there any discussion with Caltrans about extending that through all the way across if the signal goes in?
To the north side?
Yes.
We have evaluated that as part of, well, the Henson Farms Apartments application.
Exactly what I asked.
That, that triggered, you know, the, the presentation, the...
Oh.
Ah.
That's okay.
Help me out.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll go ahead and answer that while you, while you keep going again. So we had the, we had the, the, the town hall at the high school, and that resulted in an, an ad hoc committee being proposed, and I think there's efforts underway to establish who the participants are on that. I personally looked at what that would require to, because, because basically you have the frontage road, right, on the north side? And we've got the problem out at George Washington where that frontage road comes in so close to the highway that traffic really gets jammed up in there.
It does.
And so you, what you need to do to do it right is to basically divert that frontage road further north away from the highway, and that requires you to take a lot of existing homes. So it's a super expensive project. Instead of a $4 million, you're probably looking at eight or 10, and displacing a lot of, lot of residents. And, you know, there's some, there are some traffic benefits for sure in that you relieve a little bit of pressure at George Washington. A lot of those folks could come into town that way, but at, at a pretty significant cost.
Thank you. And just out of curiosity, has anybody in this room actually navigated that intersection on a regular basis between 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock?
You're talking the El Margarita?
Yeah, George Washington, El Margarita. I, I did it for a year and a half in the morning between 7:00 and 8:00 every day, and it is, it's orchestrated, but it flows. No, it does. And I, I hear everybody complain about it, but I'm like, I've been doing this for a year and a half, and it just goes. It's just wonderfully, undescribably wonderful. So anyway, that's, that's all. Thank you.
The, the keys can get pretty large, but they do clear out remarkably quickly, I feel like. So yeah, that, that, that would all be part of this $50,000 is a high level, hey, what are the different options? What makes the most sense? And then you kind of move it forward to an environmental process.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Kevin, what, I had heard recently, because of course, I live on Cherry and Harding, but Harding also was going to get some improvements, but not major, but is that something separate than your?
You said Harding?
Harding.
Yeah, so Harding between Cherry and Franklin were actually entering into a cooperative agreement with the county.
Oh, great.
Because half that road's theirs right now, and so we're going to basically repave that. They're going to repave it, and we're going to contribute for our, our half of it.
I was going to say, because the cars are like going off, and now we're, we're literally, they're driving into the orchard. It's like everything's falling off, so that'll be a good project.
That will be a good one. Yeah, and then down at the T intersection, replacing that barricade is, is top on our list, too.
That's been a nice one for a while.
Yeah. Streets and roads. Thank you for getting me back online here. Okay, utilities project, let me put this thing down. Berry School Water Line, we actually just have broken ground within the last week or so. This is a, a good project, a, a lot of grant money from the state, and it's basically providing a new distribution main in Stewart Road from River Bend School all the way over to Railroad, 12-inch line, and then from, a 14-inch line from, in Railroad from Stewart up to Tuscan where our existing one stops, and also a 4-inch service line out to Berry School so that they can get off groundwater or bottled water, I think is what they're doing right now, and, and receive city water. So that's under construction right now, hoping to get out of Stewart Road, away from River Bend, and then also out of Berry Road, away from Berry School this summer while school's out. But that, that project will be going on through at least the end of this calendar year. ASR Well System, that, that stands for Aquifer Storage Recovery Well. That's in design right now. We have about a $6 million grant from DWR. And what that project allow, will allow us to do is inject treated water into the ground during times when we have high river flows and low demands. And then, so we bank that water underground in the aquifer, and then during drought situations, we can pull it back out. It's a way to basically hang on to our water rights, too. So that's going through design. Outfall Diffuser Replacement, you've heard about this one in the past. We're kicking in a, a little bit of money, 150,000, to keep us going with getting permits. It's a hard project to get permitted through the Levy District, through Central Valley Flood Protection Board, Army Corps of Engineers, Fish and Wildlife, NOAA, on and on. And then we also have some easements to secure for the pipeline as, as it goes down south of Berry Road, actually, is where it would pop up and over the Levy. That project probably, we also have to use that 150,000 to secure some additional funding. So that project won't go until 2026, but that's the status on that one. Harder Bridge Sewer Extension, we actually have some existing money programmed for that, but I highlighted this one because it affects development in the northwest part of town. This project would basically extend the sewer main in harder, in future Harder Parkway south of the high school. So through the peach orchard, it, it would go south and then turn and go over to Bridge at Harding. And what that will do is relieve the pump station that's right there at River Valley High School and allow us to continue development in that northwest corridor by Harder Marketplace and Harder North and points west out on Butehouse at such time that, that pencils out. And then also, the recycled water preparation, what that is, is we, we had a $250,000 grant from the state to basically look at what it would, what it would look like for Yuba City to take treated wastewater and use it to irrigate landscape medians or park strips or other accepted uses. So it's just a conceptual thing, that, that sort of thing is going to come from the state at some point, that requirement. So we're just trying to, we got some grant money, and we're trying to stay ahead of it. Okay, so with that, after reviewing the proposed CIP budget, the project list, and comparing it with the adopted general plan, staff has determined that the, you know, in our opinion, the proposed, proposed CIP is consistent with the general plan. We wouldn't have put it together if we didn't think it was.
That's reassuring.
There you go.
Oh, my goop.
And so we're recommending that tonight you find that the projects listed in the fiscal year 24, 29, Yuba City Capital Improvement Project Budget are consistent with the Yuba City General Plan and forward those findings to the city council.
Okay. Kevin, how long have you been the deputy director of Public Works?
Since 2020, when Ben left us and went to Development Services.
Yeah, and you were in another department, right? Or did you, you were always in Public Works? Well, I guess what I'm getting at is I, I've watched you, I've attended many things that you have been involved in, and I'm always amazed to hear you. It's like that, oh, that trust level, like you have done your homework, and this is how we're going to go. And so anyway, thank you so much. It's good to see you. And with that, is there any questions for staff?
No questions.
Pretty thorough. See, that's what I told you. Oh, did you? Go ahead. Did you have any?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm always like, everybody talk, you're getting ready to do a motion, aren't you? Okay, are we ready to make a motion? Who wants to take that on? You got it? Go for it.
I'll make a motion to find the projects listed in the fiscal year 24 through 29, Yuba City Capital Improvement Project Budget is consistent with the Yuba City General Plan and forward findings to the city council.
No, I will second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you again for your presentation. It was great.
Very much.
Okay, future agenda items. Call Doug Libby to provide updates. I love it, they put everything in red for what I get to read. This is the easiest job, I'm telling you.
It's like reading the Bible.
I do.
Every time Jesus speaks, it's in red, right?
God said.
Yeah, God said. Yeah, God said.
All right, since Ben is not here tonight, we're going to try to combine agenda items eight and nine into a single item, and I will play dual roles. You know, first, I just wanted to give some kudos to Jaspreet. She has really, I think, stepped it up over the last several months. When we lost our assistant planner, that meant a lot of the the current planning workload fell upon her shoulders, and she has just been processing these projects swiftly as she can, getting them to be able to be brought forward. You're seeing her do these presentations. She's doing a great job with that, so just really nice job. Thank you. Okay, upcoming projects. So a little unusual, we're, we typically hold one meeting per month. We're actually going to be holding the meeting of the 26th this month, so you've got two meetings. So you just got done with this agenda. We're going to be sending you another one next week, which is additional workload for staff, to try to push that out and get the notices all done correctly. So at the end of the month, we're going to be looking, we have two projects for you. One is Use Permit 2308. It also includes a parcel map. This is a vacant parcel located at the southwest corner of Walton and Franklin. We have a convenience store, fueling, and car wash proposed at that location. It's the fueling that requires the use permit. We also bring forward to you Use Permit 2403, just to the north, west side of Walton. We have, so north of the Franklin Pharmacy, you have the Franklin Plaza. And so there's a chiropractor in there, there's like a VR arcade in there. So just to the southwest of the VR arcade business, you would see, there's a vacant pad there. And so we're going to be bringing forward about a 3,600 square foot building that includes, it's a basically shell with drive-through for a future quick serve restaurant. And so there's not an tenant right now, and so it's the drive-through portion of it that requires the use permit that we'll be bringing forward to you. Looking out a little further, we have the July 10th meeting. We're actually looking to cancel that one. So we'll give you, give you July 10th off. But we are going to come back on the 24th of next month, where we're looking at potentially having the what's called Buthe Vista Estates East subdivision. So you might remember, May of last year, we brought forward the Johnson Ranch subdivision, north part of town, west of Highway 99, along the west Onstock Frontage Road, 82-lot subdivision. And so just to the south of that, there's an, there's a eight-acre parcel, and so they're dividing that up to 37 lots. And so we're working on the environmental and to push that out the door pretty quick. And so that's actually, between those two projects, that's going to fill in a couple more puzzle pieces of the Buthe Vista Neighborhood Plan up there. So that's really only going to leave the final chunk of land, which is southwest of P's and 99 that still needs to fill in. So it's, after all these years, so from the late 1990s, being able to see the plan finally build out is actually exciting to finally see.
Well, when do you start notifying the neighbors? Because again, I know that area, and they, you know,
Few days.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, they're just not very happy, but I understand.
So it's very similar, so I mean, just going to tell you, you're going to see very similar conditions, similar mitigation measures that that will be imposed, so.
Good.
Let's see here. So one of the things that we heard from the Planning Commission at the, what was it, March 13th Joint Council Planning Commission Workshop, was that the Planning Commission said that you wanted to hear some feedback on, once projects come through you, you're like, whatever happens, we never hear what what goes on. So I've got an update for you. We got an update for you. So as Kevin alluded to, we actually had a number of development agreements or development agreement amendments that came forward through this commission starting in January. And so those were the Newcombe Development Agreement Amendment, we had West Railroad, and then Sutter Heritage. All three of those have actually been approved by the city council and have, are now recorded. So they are in effect. Did want to update you on the, you might remember, the proposed ordinance amendment to the parking of RVs, boats, and trailers. So that went before the city council last month, and that was unanimously approved. So that actually takes effect June 20th, so next week. But I will say that the Planning Commission, you might remember, had a recommendation that when those units are, get to be over eight feet, and you're, you need to set back five feet from the property line. That was embraced by the council and incorporated into the into the ordinance. So one other item, we were processing a use permit for Recycling Industries. That was a project that actually bypassed the Planning Commission by city council using an alternative review process that is built into the municipal code. And that project was highly controversial when it came forward for approval in 2019. And so one of the justifications that the council can make is that we know it's going to get appealed again, so we're just going to bring it directly to the city council, which they did. So we presented that May 7th of last month. That's a little unusual, we recommended denial for the project, and due to lack of SEQA compliance was the, and then wanting to maintain the conditions that were already put on the project, the city council unanimously, with five city council members present, denied that use permit amendment application.
Who was, who was the applicant on that?
Recycling Industries.
Okay.
Yeah. And then one item I wanted to touch on is actually going to go to the city council next week, and the reason why it it's not coming before you is because it's not in the municipal, it's not in the zoning code. So next Tuesday, I'm going to present to the city council a proposed exception to our noise regulations. So it's the noise regulations aren't in the zoning code, they're in a different section. And so when you make a change to it, you're not required to come back before the Planning Commission. So what the exception is, it has to do with our downtown area. And so if you look at the noise ordinance today, it basically has, you know, quiet hours are after 10:00 PM. Well, if you're interested in allowing for nighttime entertainment activities in your downtown, you need to consider extending that out a little bit. And so the the change we're going to take forward is going to extend it to midnight, and that would be Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays weekly. And then it would be federal holidays, and then you'd get like New Year's, St. Patrick's Day, Cinco de Mayo, the weekends for the the summer and winter stroll events, those type of things. And so the idea is that that's going to be the first step into turning our downtown into more of an entertainment focus. So it would allow for live music. And so if you're within 100 feet of a residence, the business would have to come to Development Services and would have to basically lay out what they're going to do to mitigate noise. And then if Development Services could require a noise study, but we could also approve it.
Mr. Libby, does that just affect the downtown people, or any house in Yuba City can now be loud?
No, no, this is very specific to the properties from Colusa Avenue or Highway 20 in the north down to Bridge, and the property, so within our Downtown Business Association area. In order to qualify to use it, your property actually has to have frontage on either Pluma Street or Center Street.
Perfect, thanks.
So quiet hours, 10:00 through the rest of Yuba City shall continue. And so that's what I have for you tonight. Thanks.
Good, that's a lot.
Thank you, Doug.
That's really good. All right, any?
I just want to plug Hooligans. If anyone hasn't eaten there yet, it's really good.
I had lunch here today, it was really good.
Yeah.
That was really nice, nice. Do you have anything? No? Anybody?
Hooligans?
How about the Hooligans?
Irish pub, owned by a real Irishman.
Oh, that's the one where the old barber shop used to be.
Justin's, where Justin's used to be.
Oh, no, oh, oh, okay.
Hey, Mr. Commissioner, do you have anything for Sutter County to report?
Yes, we had a proposal for a special event venue down in South County, down off of Mitchell Road, near, drawing a blank, Nicholas. Very controversial. The neighbors were up in arms citing things like traffic and drunks walking down the street at night, and I think the only thing they didn't bring up was the potential for aliens to land and leave crop circles in the the farmland next to the event. However, Planning Commission did recommend approval. It was appealed, and according to the paper, the board supervisors denied the appeal and allowed the project to go forward. So really, that's about the only thing we've had in a while. It was pretty exciting.
It is interesting. When I was on Sutter County, we had a project just like that, and we denied it, and it didn't go through. So maybe that person will come back, because obviously, you've opened up a can of worms. So, all right. Well, with that, I say let's adjourn.
Yeah.
Adjourn? Oh, I do have one. I will not be here at the 25th. My husband's having surgery, so I gotta take care of my man. Thank you, we are adjourned.